Okay, so I'd like to call to order the regular business meeting of the Board of Education from Monday, December 12th to order. If I could ask everybody to please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, and with this liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everybody. We have a big crowd tonight. Can you ask for a roll call, please?
Steven Arthur.
Here.
Jim Baxa.
Here.
Alex Delipali.
Here.
Jack Grudy.
Here.
Karen Lundstedt.
Here.
Scott Lew.
Here.
Ellen Mauer.
Here.
Okay, so we have everybody tonight. So we are going to have a brief moment of silence before we get started with our formal agenda for our recently deceased students and a former staff member. So I'll turn it over to you.
Well, as the District 128 community, I think is well aware at this point, this has been an exceptionally difficult month for LHS and the D-128 family as we mourn the deaths of three Libertyville High School students and one recent retiree. Students Maddie McInnery, Zach Nyer, Fatima Durani, and Mary Jo Robbins, who's a staff member, passed away over the Thanksgiving break. Please keep the families and friends of these individuals in your thoughts and prayers and join us in a moment of silence in their memories.
Okay, so the remainder of our agenda, we will have education presentation tonight, including a lot of student recognition, it looks like. A very brief president's report or a few comments from me. We'll have updates from all of our student school board reps, who I have allowed to be dismissed shortly thereafter, as I understand exam season is quickly approaching. Isn't that a nice name, though?
Worth it.
Then we'll have the superintendent's report, and then we'll open it up for public comment. Please limit your comments to three minutes. We will approve the consent vote agenda, which we reviewed earlier this evening, and then we'll have updates from program and personnel, facilities and finance. Nothing more from property. And then SEDOL here. Brief update from SEDOL, IASB. Okay. All right? Anything else? Okay, so let's start out with our education presentation, project-based learning campaign for change.
I think with the number of students we have tonight, we're actually going to start with the student recognition piece first, so John, we'll turn it over to you, or Maria, whoever wants to start.
Given the choice, I'll go. Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see a great crowd here. We have to start with tonight, five all-state recognitions, three of them coming from Libertyville, so that's very exciting. First I have Morgan Paul. And I guess not. Morgan is coached by David Fowler, and he could not be here tonight. She won the Lake Forest sectional diving title and qualified for the state meet for the third year in a row. Quite a feat. I'm not sure how long she's been diving, but if you watch her dive, it seems like forever. This year, she finished eighth in the state in her final high school meet, and she will dive at EY New U next year. So congratulations to Morgan. Next, we have Ryan Wittenbrink, and he is coached by Andy Bittah. Ryan received all-state designation in soccer, as you can tell by his shirt. He helped to lead the Wildcats to an NSC Conference championship and an IHSA regional championship this year. He is one of the offensive leaders on the team as a junior. So many good things to come. Congratulations.
Yeah, let's do all of them again. Okay, so just hang around up there.
Next, I have Mike Jones to introduce Tyler Joe.
First, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Vernon Hills football team and the coaches and the director here. Our district football teams are in a roll, so Bill, we've got to keep that going, all right? My pleasure to introduce Tyler Joe. Tyler's a special athlete. Obviously, he has physical talents, as you can see. But here's a special thing, and I don't know if this has ever happened in my 14 years at LHS. Not only was he recognized as an all-state player on the field, but he's also an all-state, all-academic student as well, so he's got a very bright future ahead of him, Tyler Joe.
I often see Tyler walking in the halls with some of the recruiters that come by, but one thing I have to say for him is he's got a guts quotient, too. He asked his girlfriend to homecoming in front of an entire auditorium full of people.
And Mike, come on up.
Vernon Hills has had a successful fall as well. It seems like we've been celebrating fall accomplishments for quite a while, and we'll get to cap it off tonight. So tonight, we have two all-state individuals and a team to honor. So we're going to start with the two individuals, Christopher White for soccer and Andrew Smith for football, so I'm going to invite those guys up. Coach Delipali and Coach Bellicomo will say a quick word, and then we'll shake hands and take a picture.
Well, thanks for giving me the mic, Dr. Gilliam. Just want to thank the board, our school admin, and everybody else that is here, Christopher's family, Anne, David, and Sister Sarah for attending. Really appreciate it. A few words, it's been four years, so it's difficult to sum this up in a couple of minutes, but I'll tell you that in the 19 years of coaching varsity soccer, that the person standing next to me is the hardest worker I have ever had the opportunity to work with. We have sent many, many players, Division One, all different levels collegiately. Chris has the world in front of him, and I will tell you that it's been an honor and a blessing the last four years to have him in our program, and he will not be replaced. So Christopher White, all-state recognition.
Andrew Smith was the leader of our defense for the last two years, but he's the leader of a defense this year that in the regular season only gave up 11.7 points a game. The first three playoff games, the first-team defense pitched a shutout. He was an all-area honorary captain, well-deserved. He's been a two-time captain for us. He's a leader of our defense, 160 tackles, 12 for loss, but he's a great kid and a great kid to have in your program, and I'm going to miss him. Andrew Smith.
So as many of you know, we had a good run here in the fall with Coach Bellicomo and his football team. Started the year with some uncertainty, playing, what, eight out of nine teams that we didn't have on the schedule last year, so not really sure. But clearly prepared the guys well as they headed into the state playoff series. And for those of you that saw that championship game, you know you saw one of the greatest high school football games you could ever want to watch. So Bill Bellicomo's going to introduce his squad.
It was one heck of a run that we got on towards the end of the year there. I can't say enough about these boys, the senior leadership that we had on this team. I'm proud of them, and I'm proud of the way they went and competed downstate. It was great for our community, our administration was supportive, and made the run and the stay in Champaign outstanding. Something these guys will remember forever. I want to introduce our coaches and our manager. Our number-one manager here, Anthony Bertold. Go ahead and bring the trophy out there, Anthony. Madison Rennahan and Morgan Rennahan were also managers for the team. Now I'll introduce the Cougars, Camden Anderson.
Camden, why don't you come up here?
David Famasino. Kyle Fosbinder. Avery Foster. Peyton Foster. Drew Garrett. Quinn Yaren. Jeremy Getlin. Brandon Harris. Jack Himmel. James Hammer. Nicholas Porte. Kyle Hall. Jerry Jurel's playing basketball tonight. Nicholas LaFleur. Danny Lester. Roman Magazoo. Mahim Mannan. Christopher Mariella. Jonathan McGuire. Jake Morris. Avanash Nathan. Aaron Pelizi. Luke Perlin. Janet Peterson. Jeff Rosenstein. Adam Salhadi. Lynn Smith. Andrew Smith. Justice Thomas. Caleb Thompson. Nathan Truger. Eric Tursky. Adam Berdhees. Jacob Witkowski. And now I want to introduce our coaches, who always put these guys in position to be successful. Without them, you know, this wouldn't be possible. Mike Larson. Abellino Cortez. Tim Dido. Todd Gedville. Greg Stelling. Ken Mooney. Ryan Palmer. And Rick Hill. We appreciate the opportunity. Thanks for the, thanks for arriving.
Guys, a round of applause for Bill Bellicomo. You're going to have some neo-guys, you know, like your team picture, right after the Patriots. the board meeting, but we understand it won't take a personal way if you don't, but I want to tell you that doing student recognition is the favorite thing that we do in this district, celebrate student success. But we also want to have all of the young people, these incredible young people that we've introduced tonight. We want to take an opportunity to give all the parents and families a round of applause for your support of these young people, because they live here. So, thank you very much, okay?
to turn it over to Dr. Rita Fisher, who is our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, who has, I think, some really exciting tonight. So Rita.
One of the most significant things that we do as educators, no matter the discipline we teach or the role that we play in schools, is to encourage continuous growth and improvement in our students, to help them, inspire them to envision a better future for themselves, for their school, for our country, for the world. And we're really privileged tonight to have with us Alicia Vood and students from her college preparatory writing class. Alicia did just that. She inspired students through her project, the Campaign for Change, to identify a local problem, seek a solution to it, and present it to an authentic audience. So I'm going to introduce Alicia, and she will introduce her students to share with you their really excellent work that inspired the administrators and students who were part of that authentic audience.
Thank you so much, Rita. It is my privilege, and thank you so much for offering the floor to my students. They have worked really hard. As Rita mentioned, with the new calendar change, we had to change a little bit of the curriculum around. Students used to have to write a 10-to-12-page argumentative research paper, and with the schedule change with having finals before winter break, we had to make that change, which I don't think they were too disappointed about. Instead, they wrote a group argumentative proposal, and I decided to try to do something, as Rita mentioned, on the local level, and they all had to investigate and choose an issue that they thought could be improved, could be strengthened, here at Vernon Hills High School. And just to preface this, it was by no means, the initial brainstorming phase was by no means a bashing session of our school. In fact, the common phrase was, "Our school is pretty great," right? "Our school is pretty great." And so it really took some creative kind of brain power for them to think about, okay, our school is great, but what are some things that could make it better? And last week, the groups presented here in the library, and we asked administrators to show up in department chairs, and everyone showed up, which was so cool to give the kids a live, authentic audience. And then Rita Fisher and Mary Tatterick were the judges, and so we invited the top three groups to present tonight at the board meeting. Our first-place group, their proposal was to initiate a later school start time. This is their poster here, but unfortunately, they couldn't be here this evening because of some sport commitments, and so we just wanted to highlight their good work. And then the other two groups, one was dealing with improving school lunches, and the other was doing more to educate on rape culture at the high school level. So the first group is going to be on improving school lunches, and those students are Julia, Aleah, and Lindsay, and they'll come on up. So thank you again.
Okay, so here are some pictures of school lunches from different countries around the world, so you guys can just take a look at those.
So pass those around, and keep in mind how nutritious and all the food is and how much they get of all the food. So obviously, those obviously look like great meals to have, but unfortunately, we have meals like this in the United States.
You guys can pass it around.
This was actually done for a smaller group, so it was a lot easier to show to everyone. But, so obviously, providing school lunches has become a very important topic around a lot of areas in the United States, and especially in Vernon Hills, where we actually benefit from high taxes and should be able to provide our students with healthier lunch options, but unfortunately, we have not been doing that. And our group actually took time out of our period to go down and take pictures of the school lunches that we provide today. And the school lunches include things like macaroni and cheese, Coca-Cola products, potatoes and rice, all types of pizzas. The snacks include Pop-Tarts, muffins, cookies, and all the types of chips you could possibly imagine, and the healthy options are limited to things such as a couple of bananas and apples in a bowl, and the very overpriced container of fruit that we have.
So obviously, by having some fruit and some healthy options, our school is making an effort, and another option that they have is like the little packages of hummus and pretzels, which are priced at $3.75. So students kind of like don't want to buy the healthier food, because you don't get a big portion, and it's really expensive. And our biggest counterargument is that it's going to be really expensive to have healthier lunches, but schools in San Francisco actually piloted a program where they got rid of all junk food and replaced it with all healthy food, like a salad bar and a deli, and they actually turned over a profit, because students are more attracted to the healthy food during the day.
And another problem that we run into is how athletes and theater kids, they, well, the theater kids are usually here from 7:55 a.m., and sometimes they're here till 10 o'clock at night, and they might not have time to pack any snacks in the morning, so the only, but the only thing that they can rely on is our vending machines. And our vending machines are filled with candy and different types of chips, and there's not really anything that's healthy in them. The healthiest thing is probably the trail mix, but that's not even that healthy, because it has M&amp;M's and chocolate chips in it. So one of our solutions that we proposed was to put the, in the soda machines, we were going to do the flavored water in them, or 100% natural juice, and then improve the snacks in the vending machine with the food.
So another solution that we proposed was to actually implement a salad bar in place of areas that have like the potatoes and the rice in our cafeteria, because the salad bar would actually benefit students that are, that have dietary restrictions or are religiously affiliated or cannot eat meat. And currently, we serve packaged salads that are priced at like $3, and actually just come with a piece of chicken, lettuce, one shredded carrot, some cheese sprinkled on top, and the Caesar dressing that's on the side. And we oftentimes see students picking apart the salads, because they have dietary restrictions and would like to choose the healthy options, but cannot enjoy it. So we wanted to propose a salad bar that had your choice of mixed greens, proteins, toppings, whatever you would like to put on it, which also would benefit the students that actually have a free lunch here, because oftentimes, students in these homes eat things like rice and potatoes, because those are the cheapest options that they can have for a family. And when they come to school, they should be able to eat something that is healthy and something that is cheaper at price, and actually make something for themselves that benefits their nutrition, instead of eating potatoes and rice once again, because our school definitely needs to practice what we preach, and we continuously preach that we need healthier foods. We need to, students need to benefit from nutritious options and everything, so we really don't have an excuse not to do so, because we follow schools all around us. And schools such as Stevenson, Carmel Catholic, and Nutreer actually have been making many changes in their lunch menus, and if you'd like, you can come up here after and take a look at these menus, but they include things such as baked chicken, grilled veggie wraps, then there's like cheese vindaloo and things like we haven't even heard of here at Vernon Hills, because we are provided with things such as mac and cheese, fried hot brown chicken, pizza, mini corn dogs, and mozzarella sticks on repeat day to day.
And we always learn about how important it is to eat healthy for your physical well-being, but we don't really ever talk about how important it is for your mental well-being, and after lunch, you're usually tired anyway and more lethargic in your next class, but if you're able to get a piece of pizza, curly fries, and four cookies and a soda during lunch at our school, you're obviously not going to be able to pay attention while in your next class, and there's no limits on how much you can get, and there's no reason that a student should be able to have a large soda all during the day, but along with all of those different things before the rest of their school day.
And we also do an experiment in Mr. Pagani's health class, where we take fries from places such as Wendy's or McDonald's, and then R. fries, and it turned out that R. fries didn't mold, which is bad, because they're supposed to mold. So that just shows how like bad the fries are.
So we understand that we're not going to remove all of the unhealthy options from our schools all at once, but we think that either taking out fries maybe a couple days out of the week, or implementing that salad bar into our cafeteria would actually benefit the students a lot, benefit their health a lot, and also maybe even turn over a profit for our school, which is obviously very important for the school.
And another idea that we discussed is like above the pizza or the soda to put signs saying like, oh, you need to run five miles to burn off like however much food, because a lot of times, people don't realize how much they're eating and how bad for you it is. And our last point is that we go throughout the day learning about how important it is to have healthy food for your physical and mental well-being, but then we go to a class like Mr. Pagani's, where he shows us how horrible the food is at our school, so what are we left to think? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, team. Okay, so in the second group that we have here, Anna, Anna, and Mac are going to present on doing more to educate on rape culture at the high school, the high school level. And they have a presentation that will be right here.
Hi.
Hi. So I'm Anna.
I'm Anna.
And I'm Mac.
And we're talking about sexual assault education in our school. In the United States, there's almost 300,000 sexual assaults of age 12 and under reported every year, and the sad truth is that only 40% of brief cases actually get reported, and only 3% of rapists will ever spend a day in prison. And these statistics may seem shocking, but when you take a look at contemporary examples like Brooke Turner and other cases, it's kind of a part of our society that we choose to ignore, but it's a pressing issue. In our school, we have an excellent freshman health program, but students do not retain the information, this valuable information about sexual assault and rape culture. So students are left vulnerable, especially in their young adulthood. So students are left vulnerable, especially in their young adulthood, to beliefs, perceptions that society has, such as stereotypes that blame the attacker, validating the, blame the victim and validate the attacker, which are extremely toxic for our society. And as students head off to college, especially like Big Ten schools, and even in high school, they need to be protected from this pressing issue, because it's not simply that they're afraid of being attacked, it's that they don't understand what sexual assault and what rape culture is. Because at the root of the problem is an issue with education. If they're not educated about this issue, then there's no way for them to understand the real problem. Instead of treating the symptoms of the problem, we need to go right to the root.
A topic we've, a solution we feel would strongly benefit students is as if we were to integrate the topic of rape culture and sexual violence into other classrooms, just to expose the students to more, to more of it. An example of this would be writing, writing a paper or reading an article or a book about it in a literature class. Just something simple to make it a more prevalent topic.
One great thing that we do have at this school is called a VH Give. And what VH Give is, is a group that has students come in one Friday of every month and talk to our school about how to make our school better and how to make students treat each other better. And we thought that we could implement this into making, or giving our students more exposure to rape culture education, because we feel as if we don't get enough exposure. And what would happen is we would have the teachers come and talk to, or we'd have teachers talk to students rather than the students talking to students, to let the kids have more exposure. Another solution we said that we could have was hiring professional speakers and rape victims to come in and talk about how they've been affected and how things that they've done have happened, and just giving us more education on how it has happened so we can avoid it.
Our freshman year, we have one semester of health, in which we are taught a great deal, such as with nutrition, rape, and drugs. So it's a great health class, and we learn a lot. But we don't benefit as much going off to college because we are taught so early in our high school careers. If we were to be taught later, nearing the end of our senior year, we'd be sent off to college with all this fresh knowledge of how to protect ourselves, how to protect people around us, what's safe, what's not, things to look out for, and we'd be much better off, as your kids would be, if we were all educated and sent off into the real world on our own.
One potential setback that many of you may ask is, how would we implement this into like the schedule of the senior? We said that we would go back to a traditional freshman year when we had, and we would take one semester, one semester of gym away, and put health back in and have like a senior send-off class, so that they would, so we could teach them about everything. And one, and like this would, this class would consist of the typical teaching, like a girl how to defend herself if she ever was put in this situation. But one thing we thought we could implement was having like a class, or not like a class, but a section focused on boys and telling them that, and pretty much teaching them that consent, and yes means yes, and like no means no. And that, just pretty much telling them that things are not okay, and like if a girl is drunk or something like that, that it's just not okay to do anything without their consent.
Another concern parents might have is that it's not really a school responsibility, that schools shouldn't be socializing the youth. But this isn't a matter of social views or anything like that. It's a matter of protection. And we can't let something so important rest in the hands of parents, because it's like asking parents to be able to choose to vaccinate their kids or not. Sure, most parents might make the right decision, but only a few children, if only a few children are uneducated, then you have a, you can have a serious problem, and as they go forward in high school and as they go forward out into the world.
Thank you.
Thanks.[854.13][854.13][applause]
All right. Thank you. Very well done. Okay. Set it for, okay, present. All right. So, you know, before we go further, I just want to take a moment to address an issue that's been raised recently in regards to sprinkler head replacement at Vernon Hills High School. And specifically, specifically why replacement of sprinkler heads was not done during a voluntary recall period between 2001, 2007. In 2001, Central Sprinkler Company announced a voluntary recall on certain sprinkler heads it manufactured. And Central initiated this action because it discovered the performance of their O-ring sprinklers can degrade over time due to corrosion or other effects on the O-rings from mineral salts or other contaminants in water. These factors could result in the need for higher-than-normal water pressure for the sprinkler heads to activate. Several styles of these sprinkler heads were installed in VHHS when the school was built in 1999. And it appears that Central Sprinkler sent voluntary recall notices to their customers who purchased the sprinkler heads, who in turn then were expected to notify the management of buildings where the sprinklers were installed. From 2001 through 2007, it's believed that the company sent one additional notice regarding voluntary sprinkler, the voluntary sprinkler program, as well as a final notice informing customers that the deadlines to register for replacement of those sprinkler heads was ending in August of 2007. Following an internal investigation, none of the notifications that may have been sent to D-128 or VHHS have been located in any of the district files. Therefore, we've been unable to confirm if proper notification was received, or if it was received, to whom it was sent. In 1994, District 128 began to use a third party to provide buildings and grounds services at LHS. And at that time, the Director of Buildings and Grounds was employed by that third party. When VHHS was opened in 1999, Buildings and Grounds Services for this facility were also subcontracted to that third-party contractor, and the Director of Building and Grounds was moved from LHS to VHHS, and an additional person, an Assistant Director of Buildings and Grounds, was added at LHS. If District 128 or VHHS was notified of the sprinkler recall, the Director of Building and Grounds at the time, who was employed by the third-party contractor, was responsible to inform the D-128 administration of any work that was to be performed. Based on the current findings of our internal investigation, we've been unable to confirm that the administration was properly notified of the sprinkler recall by the Director of Building and Grounds during the period of the recall, during the recall period. Furthermore, during multiple follow-up fire inspection reports also conducted during that period, it was noted that there was a notation on those reports that the sprinkler heads were under a recall, but we've been unable to confirm that that information was forwarded to anybody in the administration. The Director of Building and Grounds at place during that period is no longer an employee, or no longer works at District 128, 128, that were not employed at that time. And to address these issues and a number of issues report, or relating to reporting deficiencies from the Building and Grounds contractor, the Building and Grounds organization was restructured in 2014, and the leadership positions responsible for Building and Grounds at both campuses are now directly employed by and are fully accountable to the relevant District 128 administrators. When the leadership structure was changed, the sprinkler head issue was brought to the attention of the district-employed Assistant Director of Building and Grounds. The issue was researched, confirmed, and plans were initiated for the sprinkler head replacement. Phase one of the project was completed in the summer of 2015. Phase two was completed in the winter of 2015. Phase three was completed in the summer of 2016, following a review of the bid package by the Board in May of 2016. And then the final phase of the project is planned for completion sometime in 2017. So on behalf of all of us on the community, District 128 School Board, and the District 128 Administration, and building teams, I just want to assure everybody that the safety and security of our students is a top priority for all of us. We're confident that the restructuring that was implemented has resolved many of the communication issues that may have contributed to these project delays. We will continue to monitor the situation, and when necessary, we'll take additional actions that may be needed in the future to ensure that all matters requiring the attention of the District 128 Administrative Team and the Board of Education are elevated and are timely and thorough now. Okay? All right. That is it for my report. Report from the student school, right? School.
Awesome. Good evening. We have a whole bunch of announcements and events that have happened at LHS. We have a couple of awards. So Jenna Elketit and Chris Hayvogel, two high school seniors, received the Daughter and Son of the American Revolution Award. So I personally know both of them, and they're awesome people. They're the brightest and most positive people I've ever met. Our senior Johnny O'Connor went to the Special Olympics for state in bowling. And then winter sports are starting as well. Model UN came back from Simon, the Chicago Model UN Conference, this weekend. And Addison Whitney, Jessica McLennan, and Olivia Gobin all received awards at the conference. Addison and Olivia both received outstanding awards, I believe, and Jessica got an honorable mention. Just because I'm a swimmer, last week, on Thursday, at our home meet against Warren, we decided to honor Joshua Church and his family by wearing, the entire team had blue pins that were wearing on their warmups for the rest of the season. Our swim caps this year are blue paw prints with the initials J.C. in memory of him. And then as, just something, we presented him with, or we presented his family with a bouquet of flowers and a signed cap framed for his family. And so we gave that to his family at the home meet, and I was just super proud that our LHS swim team did such a nice thing for them. Moving forward, Student Council has already planned our future Turnabout Dance theme. It's going to be the Roaring Twenties. So it's going to be filled with some awesome spirit days we have planned, such as Market Crash Monday's and Flapper Fridays. And since the juniors in AP Lang have just recently finished, or are close to finishing Great Gatsby, it's a good tie-in for them, too. We're doing something a little different this year, and we're changing the style of, we're separating the assembly and the Turnabout Dance theme. And so the assembly this year is going to be a showcase of the talent we have at Liberty Ville High School. We're calling it Liberty Ville's Got Talent, very similar to Vernon Hills, is what they do. And so we're hoping to have like plenty of additions. I'm pretty sure that you have to submit a Google form by, I think, January 12th, roughly about when we get back from winter break. So we're hoping to see some additions, not just of like singing and dancing, but maybe like impressions, weightlifting, and maybe even like water bottle flipping. So yeah, I'll move this on to Ellen.
Okay, so speaking of Student Council, LHS recently had their, they finished their Wish Initiative, which is an initiative, we've already talked about it, but students in their third period fundraise money, and they buy Christmas gifts for families in need in Lake County. And this year, we had 87 families, and it was just incredible to see them all pick up their gifts, to see everybody volunteering, doing crafts with the kids, carrying gifts out to the car. And Student Council also hosted a Wish Closet. So we went out and bought toys, and third-period classes could kind of come shop in the closet for their Wish families. Additionally, we have a club at LHS that's been doing awesome things. It's called Advocats for Human Rights. And they focus a lot on women's rights. So one of their great things that they did recently was pass out safety pins for all the teachers and students to wear after the election. But they also do all kinds of presentations advocating for gender equality and just raising awareness about human rights violations worldwide. Another thing that LHS and Vernon Hills together did was the Admissions Game presentation for juniors. I actually attended, it was during the last board meeting, but it was a super cool presentation because it kind of showed us what college admissions counselors actually think about and actually process when they're looking at our applications, something that we never really knew before, looking at applications. So that's going to be interesting going into college process next year. And then finally, as Dr. Lee mentioned, LHS has had a somber and rough past few weeks as we have dealt with losses in our community. However, LHS has bounced back exceptionally, and we're all super proud of the way that people are celebrating life rather than mourning loss. Some of the great things that we've done so far, we've sponsored an initiative to make paper cranes, because those are a symbol of hope and healing, and we've encouraged everyone to write a name, or a memory, or just a thought on the paper cranes. And we're going to be displaying them somewhere in the upcoming weeks. There's also been therapy dogs brought in and additional staff to help the students deal with the losses. And everybody is using their Stand Together shirts to just show support and stand in solidarity with each other during this very hard time.
Good evening. So for Vernon Hills news, VHHS senior Oliver Leung was the top-scoring oralist at our last MATS team meet at Naperville Central High School, and at the most recent MATS team meet at Lake Forest High School, he actually received second place. So we're really looking forward to this upcoming regional and state season that will culminate in May for state at U of I. And we also have a lot of Vernon Hills seniors that were named Illinois State Scholars. And I've been seeing this all over Facebook, but our district actually had 245, so that's a pretty great accomplishment for our district. We also had our human physiology students observe the live open-heart surgery field trip, which they go through every year. So I heard some kids talking about it in our classes, and it's really a great opportunity for people that are interested in the medical field to go and experience this. On November 24th, our WISE team actually took first place at the Milwaukee School of Engineering WISE competition. So the team members were Ashwini Deshpande, Harjas Monga, Sean Kim, Akash Sadi, Uniceun, Jacob Florian, Katie Clayson, me. And Jacob Florian, Uniceun, Ashwini, and Akash also placed in the top 15. So that was a really cool, fun field trip for us that day. We also had our Junior State of America attend Fall State on November 19th, that weekend. So we just wanted to congratulate Abhay Ram, Amol Perande, Hanan Lau, and Young Soo Oh for winning the prestigious award of Best Speaker, and some of them actually won two Best Speakers. So it was a pretty great weekend for that, too. And a fun thing that we did, a couple of Fridays ago, we had Vernon Hills teachers and staff spreading the positive attitude, and they were outside, holding signs, greeting all the students that were walking in. So that was really fun to see and a great way to give back to our community and come together. And some other ways that we have been giving back to our community in our school are NHS actually held a shoe drive for greyhound dogs and for people that need shoes. So we basically collected shoes, and we'll be giving them to this organization for greyhounds, who will then be giving them to children and other people who need them. And currently, we're also holding a canned food drive in our school, so we basically are collecting food. And it's a great time of year for all of us to come together as a community, the holiday season. And this week, we also have a VH Give lesson. So it's going to be themed about finals and basically taking care of each other during this stressful time. And last weekend, our FBLA club also volunteered to remove invasive buckthorn at the Lake County Forest Preserve. So they actually cleared 125 linear feet of this damaging species, and this is actually a pretty cool volunteer opportunity that we got, so that was really interesting.
Continuing on in the sports realm, not sure if you guys heard, but our football team came second place in state in the 5A class. So we're extremely proud of them. Something that's really exciting that is involving a great deal of students this time of the year is intramural basketball, which is in full swing with 18 teams playing one another. And it's really great seeing the peer-generated energy as our VHHS students coach their own teams off other students with crowds as great as 80 people for these games. And this year, in particular, participation's really great with 185 kids, each team in, across the 18 teams, and each team designing their own t-shirts, and really getting into the groove of the basketball season. And then something really exciting about intramurals is, the winning team gets a chance to face the teachers, a team composed of teachers, which is a great competition we get to see in our Winter Recognition Assembly. And with the snow comes a new sports season as well. Speaking of the basketball teams, we're hearing very similar feedback about the difficulty of this new division, the CSL division. But despite this, they do hold really great optimism, and if our previous season showed us anything, it's that players and teams are striving harder for excellence, and we should see very similar great successes as the season progresses. Also, an individual award is congratulations to Leah Pelik of the Liberty Ville Vernon Hills Combined Fencing Club, and she's a Vernon Hills student, and she won a gold medal and received a national ranking at a tournament at Carmel Catholic High School. So that's very exciting.
Okay, switching over to fine arts, the Winter Play Midsummer Night's Dream is underway. We have our performances in the second weekend of February. But this week, the, all four choirs plus the orchestra have the annual holiday concert. And over the years, it's become so popular.
We have our performances in the second weekend of February. But this week, the, all four choirs plus the orchestra have the annual holiday concert. And over the years, it's become so popular that we've actually added two shows. So there will be a show at Vernon Hills at six and at eight P.M. And again, that features all four choirs plus the orchestra plays with us. We invite the audience to sing the Halloween chorus at the end. Dr. G maybe wants to sing with us. And then two weekends ago, the Chamber Choir had a busy week. We started the week off by caroling at Two Path Shelters. Then we had our magical dessert in the Byron Colby Barn in Grayslake. So we did two performances there and the audience really loved it. They served dessert there. We also sang on WGN Radio, The Steve Cochran Show. Then we sang at some local elementary schools. We sang at the district office where we saw some of you. And then this past weekend, we sang at the Keneo Museum, two retirement homes, and then the chapel in Grayslake. So that was kind of our cumulative end to our holiday season. We are also going to be on the Rambling Ray Show, the Friday before break, and we have a couple more performances, but Second Sustard's, we do pop songs in Acapella groups. Also, student-directed one acts are, we're just casted, so we have five short plays that have just been casted and a total casting of twenty-three students. So between that and the thirty or so students that are involved in the winter show, we have about fifty-five kids involved in just the performance aspect of theater. We also have two students that will be performing a Christmas special this weekend. Adam Hammer and Joey Copiato are presenting a first, this is the first for Vernon Hills, a Christmas special, two dollars each for tickets. And the postsees are going to go into the Backlight Theater Company, so it's a fundraiser. They'll be playing and singing some Christmas songs for us. And then a week or two ago, we had Vernon Hills Got Talent, which was a big hit. It's our talent show that we've kind of evolved, so this was the first year where we decided to have a winner. We actually had two winners, it was a tie. Sarah Abdallah played her ukulele and sang, and Ian Schwartz, who is a globally recognized Irish dancer, were, both of them were the winners, so congrats to them. And also at Vernon Hills Got Talent, it was announced that our winter dance has been turned into a Turnabout Dance, which is really exciting for the class of twenty-seventeen because Turnabout was taken out of the schedule for my school right before we were freshmen. So it's going to be our first Turnabout. So we're excited about that.
All right. Well, now, she didn't leave anything out?
You can talk a little bit longer if you want.
No, I'm sure in between, there was plenty of time to study for a game. That's a fantastic update and, you know, just a few comments. I'm always impressed with all the sports accomplishments and all the fine arts things, but I find myself sitting here tonight, listening to what you guys are saying and all of the things that you're doing for people in the community. And, you know, my hat's off to you guys at LHS. It was a really hard month and I know I was able to witness firsthand some of the things that were done for Josh and his family and you just can't put words to that. The support that they received, I know, meant everything to them. And so, you know, just extremely well done and I hope something that you guys feel really proud of, all right? Because we give you accolades all the time for all of your other many accomplishments. But again, what impresses me the most tonight is just kind of watching who you're becoming. And it's pretty cool from a distance to watch. So, you know, just keep up the great work.
Are we going to let him go now?
We're going to let you go, okay? So thank you for all your hard work and best of luck in your dance. Be sure we can say, get a break over the holidays.
For real. Well, luck on your finals.
Thank you.
You don't need luck.
Some of the early actual winners are out, so.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, good night. All right, superintendent.
Just one more final comment. I sincerely want to thank John, Marina, the Libertyville High School Crisis Team, their staff, the VHHHS Crisis Team who assisted particularly in the early days over at Libertyville after our student and staff deaths. And Willow House, it's an external partner in that process who I think really, you know, helped the schools. At the heart of what we do is caring for kids. And no school consider, can consider itself great or attain greatness unless at their fundamental level, they're taking care of kids and their fellow staff members. And I think throughout this tragedy, we've seen once again, and we've been reminded once again, that our two schools, our families, and our District One Twenty-Eight is also a community-based family. So John and Marina, thank you for your leadership during a very difficult time. And we really appreciate that. The two schools work together so well to support each other, so thank you. Okay, turn the corner here. We want to celebrate a little bit tonight, as if we haven't had enough to celebrate already. District One Twenty-Eight is proud to share the news that NICH, a national college and public school rating organization, has recently rated Community High School District One Twenty-Eight the number-two public school district in the entire United States and the number-one public school district in the entire state of Illinois. The two thousand seven Best School District ratings, ranking, which assesses ten thousand three hundred sixty-four U.S. public school districts, is based on rigorous analysis of key statistics and millions of authentic reviews from students and parents using data from the U.S. Department of Education. Ranking factors include state test scores, college readiness, graduation rates, SAT/ACT scores, teacher quality, public school district ratings, and more. Congratulations and sincere appreciation to our teachers, support staff, administrators, Board of Education, the District One Twenty-Eight Foundation for Learning, who's been such a partner in the process of supporting above and beyond in our district, our parents and communities, and of course, our incredible students. Whatever role that all of us play in the school district, our commitment to ensuring student growth and increased student achievement continues to make a difference in the lives of our students. And I want to tell you how proud we are of everyone from the board, all the way down to our building, all our parents, students, and communities. This is an awesome acknowledgement for the school district. And as the board has often heard me say, we don't seek external recognition. And when we receive that, it's always great to be recognized for the super work that everyone is doing in the school district. So phenomenal job, congratulations to everyone. And Mary, I honestly, I think we're going to stop for a minute and get a picture with everyone with the certificate. What do you think, here or up by there?
Why don't we stand by the?
Okay, come on, let's all walk up there. This is where we're celebrating.
Congratulations, boys.
Thanks, guys, thank you. Right back at you. Uh, school board, come on, come on, come on. I think you all ought to come. Come on. Come on, Scott. Alex, come on. Yeah, Rita, come on. Mary's got to take the picture. Okay, I guess we stand up here. Yeah, on the table if you want, Jim. That would be for the short guy.
Don't get too close, you're going to have the light in your eyes. Step in front of the table.
Okay, come on. Never knew you guys were so bashful.
You get this in?
Do you want us to move to the table?
You can stand in front of that table.
And still see, are you saying that I'm really short, Karen? I already knew that.
Yeah, if you want to come, you've got light.
I know.
All right, yes, we come onto this side, let's balance the picture off a little bit. Guys, we just wanted to finish this section up with a couple of slides that we've shared a little bit earlier in the fall when we get data back. And I'm not going to go over those again, but there's our growth in ACT over an extended, very extended period, period, and Bo, can you pop the next one up for me? Okay, and there's our advanced placement growth. And again, you can see those are phenomenal numbers moving forward. And the point to be made here is that this growth has not happened by chance. Okay, we have a mission. We had a goal to increase student achievement and enhance student growth. We've got a district plan and more importantly, data informed and data-driven school improvement plans at both buildings, at Marina and John Lee, Ellen Swick before John. And as you can see, they've done a phenomenal job because the bottom line of us receiving this external recognition and some of the other recognition that we've received over the last, you know, three or four years, is what it means is we have more students achieving at high levels and we have more students demonstrating growth. And that's being recognized. And although our ratings vary from rating service to rating service, generally speaking, both of our high schools are in the top one and a half percent of all public high schools in the entire United States. And as you remember, earlier in the fall, Chicago Magazine ranked Libertyville and Vernon Hills the top two high schools in Lake County, which includes some of the highest performing high schools in the entire United States. So again, congratulations to everyone. And we're going to continue, you know, to do all of our work around helping students be more successful. So great job to both the buildings and thank you for your phenomenal efforts. You certainly appreciate it. Okay, thanks, Bo. You can take that down and put up the screen if you'd want to, I guess. All right, we do have a few more good news items to share tonight. The following students were named LHS November Students of the Month. Alexa Donato, Johanna Nimmer, Morgan DeGregor, Richard Lynn, Jacob Dukelski, Peter Wosnick, Tori Rozier, and Matthew Lieber. The following VHHHS students received the December Ellen Swick Cougar Class Act Award for going above and beyond, for being compassionate and encouraging individuals, and for being exceptional representatives of Cougar values. Nicole Michiara, Amanda Egan, Megland Lee, Eli Wilson, Caitlin Brennan, Preston Swagger, Sarah Demus, Lauren DiPietro, Maki McCarthy, Jared Stoller, Wayne Miller, Louis Ramirez, Matthew Nugent, and Michelle Segura. LHS seniors Jenna Elgatit and Christopher Haye Vogel were named the recipients of the two thousand sixteen-seventeen Daughters of American Revolution, or DAR, and Sons of American Revolution, SAR, Good Citizen Awards. The award winners are selected annually from the senior class by the LHS faculty and staff. The awards recognize and reward individuals who possess the qualities of dependable debility, service, leadership, and patriotism in their homes, schools, and communities. VHHHS held its You Make a Difference Awards Breakfast on December second, recognizing eleven staff members who were nominated for the award by their peers for going above and beyond to help a student and/or their family, support colleagues, and to uphold the values of Vernon Hills High School. Congratulations to award recipients. Kerry Pelman, Dave Zacharko, John Gilliam, Karen Martin, Stella Senning, Tina Lounsbury, Brooke Gabris, Laura Oliver, Shannon Ettnier, Dulce Frichardo, and Bo Warmbold. The following students were named LHS December Students of the Month. Huiyan Hong, Kathleen Assejo, Brandon Fisher, Niva Seti, Josephine Barnaby, Claire Newberger, Lancey Marcos, Sophia Fisher, Kenneth Porcellius, Mia Kleimer, Bruce Center, Luke Christensen, Jake Maroka, Danny Ritz, and Guillermo Pardinas. LHS international language teachers Elaine Petracca, Heidi Lechner, and Jenny Getch recently presented at the American Council on Teaching of Foreign Languages National Conference in Boston. Their session shared ways to incorporate high-tech, low-tech, and no-tech formative assessments into the world language classroom. LHS English and Theater teacher Christopher Thomas received a three hundred dollar grant from local subway owners Nick and Sonia Bolz and the Chicago-based organization Fresh Films. Thomas plans to purchase new video equipment for his debate class so students can produce better quality projects and learn to be more creative in the process. And finally, after picking stocks that propelled them to the front of the class, I think we're going to need to talk to these kids, Dr. Duddy. Three LHS seniors took second place in the fall semester of the Stock Market Games Program's online portfolio simulation. The winning student team competed in the grades nine through twelve level in their geographic region, beating out over eight hundred and sixty other teams. Competition between student teams throughout Illinois drew to a close at the end of the fall session with the highest valued portfolios receiving awards. The winning student team includes Cory Isaacs, Evan Pentzel, and Luke Christensen. Deborah Kellum and her winning team will receive medals and awards of certificate. Kellum's students increased their original one hundred thousand dollar cash portfolio to a final portfolio equity of one hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and ninety dollars. They outperformed the S and P for the same period by eighteen percent. I think these kids have a future. The Stock Market Game Program is used in thousands of classrooms nationwide to help teach core academic subjects while emphasizing the importance of long-term saving and investment. Wow. So great job to all of our just amazing young people and our terrific teaching staff here. Next on the agenda this evening, as you know from reviewing our mission a couple of meetings ago, that one of the things that is a core value at the heart of our district is valuing the diversity and differences among us, becoming more knowledgeable of that, and certainly having the ability to know our fellow men and live and work in a diverse society more effectively. To that end, Dr. Gilliam has been leading some, I think, really special and important diversity work at Vernon Hills High School. And I asked John if he would come tonight and share some of the work that they've done. And again, at both of our buildings, our continued work in diversity is an ongoing, kind of on the spectrum, series of activities over a long period of time. So John, we'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thanks. It's hard to believe that three semesters ago, nearly a year and a half ago, we were thrust into the headlines after being challenged by the community with regards to how we respond to matters of race and discrimination in our schools. Much has happened since nearly a year and a half ago, and tonight I want to spend just about five minutes sharing with you some of what we've done since then. My first reaction, and maybe yours as well, after hearing some of those concerns, was to be a bit defensive. My second reaction was to want to go right to our students. So in terms of reacting to the concerns that we heard early last September, I did a few things. We as a team did a few things. The first was to go directly to the kids. I led a series of principal roundtables throughout the course of a week back in September. Had an opportunity to sit down with kids to discuss openly situations revolving around race, religion, gender, orientation, how we as a school dealt with those, how they as students felt about the way that we dealt with those. And after those discussions, framed some discussion points and then very kind of intentionally went to talk to specific stakeholder groups in the community. The first were our diverse student groups, students like Black Student, Black Student Union, Muslim Student Association, Jewish Student Union. Student Association, Jewish Student Union, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, our Straight and Gay Alliance, so on and so forth. Had an opportunity with my leadership team to talk with some of those groups, to address some of our questions and to hear some of their concerns. Had a chance to meet with parent groups, parent groups like our volunteer groups, Cougar Parent Connections, so on and so forth. Had an opportunity to meet with parents from our Black Student Union. And again, able to hear some of their concerns, their perspective about how we as a school were dealing with some of these issues. And then finally, you can imagine the difficulty sitting across from a parent of a student who for so long had put 100% trust into the school for treating these issues tenderly and carefully and strategically, and then hearing some things in the press that maybe that's not the case, and expressing some concerns. It was a difficult spot to be in as a principal, to hear, want to defend, but also listen to some of the concerns. Through those meetings, we as a leadership team were able to develop an understanding of what some of those concerns and issues were. And here's what they said. First, in general, students at Vernon Hills High School had a feeling of acceptance and safety, but things were not perfect. And it was a good reminder to me that as good as a school is, it can always be better. Here's some ways that students felt like they needed to be heard. One is, like all of us, they had a need to feel understood and celebrated, and felt like at times that wasn't always easy. They felt like they needed to have a voice, a platform, a way to be able to share who they were, a way to be able to kind of debunk misunderstandings and to address some social concerns. Students want a staff that is representative of who they are. I can share a specific example of meeting with our Latino Alliance and having one of our Hispanic kids look me in the eye and say, "There aren't any teachers that look like me." And while that wasn't an exactly accurate statement, that was that student's perception. And so students want a staff that represents who they are. Staff wants to be equipped. As I met in Principal's Roundtable with staff, they shared with me some of those same concerns and a desire to be equipped with ways to deal with such things. And then finally, students, staff, and community want to be a part of the solution. It's one of the greatest things about working in District 128 is that we have an active and willing participant when we look at our staff, students, and community. So what did our solutions look like? Last year at Vernon Hills, I can really kind of summarize it as a refocus of initiatives. Some of them had been occurring, some of them were new, but with a refocus into some of those issues that I just put up on the screen. Let me just highlight a couple. You know that each fall we have a Rite Assembly where we tackle issues of respect with our freshman class, and one of the themes that comes out of that is, before you talk, before you judge, before you act, why don't you consider walking a mile in someone else's shoes? One of the events that we put on in December was to partner with our Muslim Student Association and do Walk a Mile in Her Hijab. Again, right after, right on that theme in the Rite Assembly. Well, most of you know that that initiative met with a lot of positive response from the community, but also considerable pushback, which was a good lesson for us that as a community, we need to be understanding of where people are at and still be willing to take a step forward, take a step in confidence and faith, and do what's right with kids. One of my favorites that I'll point out was a professional development opportunity that students from our Muslim Student Association, our Black Student Union, and our Latino Alliance put together with our staff. And we had a lunch and learn where staff came and listened to kids talk about what it's like to be them in our school, and ways that the things that the teachers do or don't do in a classroom make them feel either accepted and empowered, or at times, you know, in some ways minimized or maybe set aside. It was a great way for our staff to hear real practical ways to meet the needs of kids. And then finally, I'll talk about a principal's message. At the start of this year, so on the tail of last year, I met, I did something that we've never done, and that is meet with every student in this high school to kick off the school year. And I did that through PE classes, Health, and Drive Rosette, so I could capture every kid in the gymnasium over the course of nine periods, a zero hour and then 1 through 8, where I shared a message of acceptance, respect, and ultimately, you know, that the kids are the individuals that drive our school and drive the atmosphere. And so I challenged them to think about what it is that they say and do and how they treat one another. And then finally, last year, we began plans to implement a longer-term strategic plan relative to diversity. And this is where I want to end tonight. This fall, I offered an invitation to staff to be, to become a member of a group that looked at what we do as a school, the things that we do well, the things that we don't do so well relative to these issues, what our core values are, and ways that we might move this project forward. So with their help, in late October, we established three working subcommittees. We were able to select staff leaders, teacher leaders, along with some administrators to lead those subcommittees. And those subcommittees are set to begin work in a strategic plan that will start this second semester and move indefinitely. Our hope is that this is not a one semester, a one-year, a two-year and done. This is a vision that we can cast and use for a decade or more. These are the three working subcommittees and their kind of general goals. First, we have a school climate committee, which is dedicated to finding ways to share student voice, to celebrate our differences, and to celebrate the things that we have in common, as well as outreach, reaching out to the community at large, parents, bringing them into the school, and making sure that all students and families feel supported and respected. Second group is a student support group. Many of these things we do currently, but we'll be dedicated to doing some program evaluation and determining what we do well and where we might need some work. But we'll be dealing with individual and group support needs. We will look at progressive discipline issues, things like restorative justice, and ways that we can tackle some of these issues head-on and strongly, but also make them a learning opportunity for students as well. And then finally, professional development. We know, and Dr. Lee and I have talked about this several times, that professional development, kind of equipping our staff with ways to deal with these issues, both in the classroom, in the support areas, as well as an administrative level, is of utmost importance. And then finally, in a curriculum and instruction standpoint, we will do some work in looking at our course offerings. We have already brought to the board a course that we think shares the opinions and the perspective of a diverse learning environment. We want to look at equity and access to courses. So we'll be addressing the kids that get into courses and the kids that don't, in developing and identifying any inequities in those and hitting those head-on, just to make sure that all of our students have equal access into those courses. And then persistence is making sure that once we get the kids identified and into the classes, we're there to support them and make sure that they're successful. So this three-pronged strategic plan, like I said, has been evolving over the semester and will kick off here in the winter, and I'm excited about it. I guess lastly, I'll say, as difficult as times were last year, it's good to look back and reflect and think, without some of those times, I'm not sure that we would have been in a position to kind of reflect at the things that we do as a school. And so in that regard, I'm grateful that that happened because it's provided an avenue for us to move forward, and that's a good thing. So thanks, and I appreciate it, being able to share this.
Well done, John. Thank you.[1187.26][1187.26](applause) Any questions or comments for John?
John, just one quick question. So I mean, how will we know we're making progress on an initiative like this?
So one of the things I didn't go into, we have developed a model. It's called the Logic Model for Program Development and Evaluation. And in that model, it's set up such that you develop outcomes, measurable outcomes, and then within it, a time plan to evaluate. So kind of evaluate and determine, like you just said, are we doing it right or aren't we? So that's going to be things like looking at student data, student response, community survey, that kind of thing. But to your point, one of the things that we've kind of already come to grips with is that we're good at developing programs based on what we think needs are. And we put them together, we throw them out there, and just let them go. But not very often are we good at saying, "So did that work?" And if it worked, why did it work? If it didn't work, how did it not work, and what could we do to better improve it or to shift gears and try it a different way? So that's something pretty fundamental into kind of the development of the program this year.
Great. Nice job. Any other questions?
Great job, John. Okay, almost finished with the superintendent's report. We have one donation tonight. We want to thank Mrs. Diane Bower in Lake Bluff. She donated a 1996 Mercury Grand Marky GS automobile to the Libertyville High School, and it will be used by the automotive technology class and will be junked once it is of no further use. And a moral note, you had three FOIA requests in the packet that have been dealt with. And Pat, believe it or not, there's no other, the superintendent's report is concluded.
All right, thank you. Invitation for public comment. Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record, and try to limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Who is this guy? Jerry doesn't know. Tim Anderson, 821 Bartlett Terrace, Libertyville.
Hey, Tim, will you pull the mic over just a little bit?
Tim Anderson, 821 Bartlett Terrace, Libertyville. So the first part, there's only two parts I wish to address. First one was, Pat, I want to thank you for giving your presentation on the problem of VHS sprinklers being out of compliance for 15 years. And speaking with Robert Wetzel, Fire Safety Compliance Manager, Illinois Office of State Fire Marshals. He spoke with me for approximately 55 minutes, and the next day sent me a very lengthy email. It is his position that some of the district had to know that there was a recall because the installer would have been paid for free, the village, the district wouldn't have had to pay to install them. For a six-year period, the district ignored a free installation, a refitting of all of the sprinklers. That was six years. I remind the public and the board, three of the current board members were on the board during the last three years of that recall. It is unconscionable that those board members did not know. If you didn't know, and I will accept your position you didn't know, then your architect lets you down and some of the administration, primarily the business office, lets you down. The knowledge was there, it wasn't passed on to you. For 15 years, you were out of compliance. Regional Office of Education, Royce Lee Woods' office, she is chagrined and embarrassed because they do an annual inspection, and they can now testify to me they have no idea who did your inspection. They asked, "Did you have the sprinklers inspected?" The answer was yes. They didn't look at any documentation. So somewhere down the line, the ball fell through, and for 15 years, you were out of compliance with the village and the basic concept of protecting. Forget the issue of the student's safety. The assets and the equipment were put into peril needlessly for 15 years. That is unconscionable, and you forfeited, you forfeited six years in order to get it fixed, and you didn't do that. So that's the end of that. The next thing is, you're going to have a consent vote agenda next on the line. If you look at your consent vote agenda, and for the public, which never shows up until the public's on the camera, in the consent vote agenda, you vote for everything that's on there. You don't go through it line by line, you just vote for all of it. In there, if you will look at your, you have on the second page, Amendment to the Assistant Superintendent of Business Contract. That is a key issue. It's been an issue for many months here. That is the second-highest paid position in the district. There's one person paid more, but they're under retirement contract, so they have the 6% bump. It is the most important fiscal office in here. You have buried that extension in a consent vote agreement. That should be a separate vote unto itself, not just part of a general vote. That, I believe, is just ingenuous by the board. Furthermore, by extending the contract, you know that that particular contract expires, the one that we're under right now as we stand here until you vote, expires on December 31st. By giving the six-month extension as per your board packet agreement is in there, you are going back and including the option to pick up a 30% bonus of $67,000. If you take the salary for the one year, which is 226 and change, the first semester was 113, the second semester's 113. By extending the contract for six months, you give the ability to pick up a $67,000 bonus that was lost because when the contract expired, the person had not fulfilled the agreement to get the 67. So in essence, you are given a 60% signing bonus for staying for another six months. That's an unconscionable waste of the taxpayers' money. You didn't have to do it, you did it. You already know that the story ran in the Tribune about the 30% severance package. Unique here. There is legislation pending, been submitted, to eliminate that 30% post-retirement bonus. Knowing that, you went ahead and gave it out anyway. That is unconscionable. So this has been done by board members that have been on this board for 12 and 14 years. Gentlemen, there's got to be a change, and the change needs to be at the board level because the board cannot manage the staff. Thank you.
Oh, Merry Christmas to you too, Tim. You know, it's interesting, we've been together now for, since 2014. I've been attending school board meetings with a specific point in mind, and that was to talk to you from a taxpayer standpoint. And the facts, the real world facts that say, wow, we're paying one hell of a lot of money in taxes, and we need to do something about it. That's a state problem, you know, based on the article that I just read in, I believe it was a Tribune, that the state is very much part of the problem, how funds are allocated. But as we move through to, in year 2017, I'm asking that, you know, we really do concentrate and look at, again, together, looking at maintaining, improving the quality of the education, and at the same time, hopefully, cutting some costs where we can, or looking at costs where we can, so that 73% of our tax dollars, which you affect, you being great schools, high schools, schools in general, that we really do something to try to drive that down. And I really, I like Libertyville, I like Vernon Hills, I like District 128. You know, I marvel every time I come here. I used to come here and I used to think, boy, what a pain in the pants. I gotta go to this school board meeting. I really enjoy these meetings. I really do.
I'm enshrining my life there.
Well, I listen to the young kids.
Yeah, and it's on, it's very touching.
I listen to and I look at your achievement levels, and I applaud you. But, you know, our challenge- But, you know, our challenge as we move through, in 2017, is to try to maintain and improve and cut costs and try to decrease the burden of taxes to the taxpayers of Vernon Hills and Libertyville. And we can do this together, and we can work hard at it. I applaud, I applaud principals, I applaud the director of curriculums. I've had firsthand experience in interviewing some of the seniors on this mock interview program. I can tell you, you guys are doing a better job preparing these kids for the real world and jobs than many of the colleges today, and I've interviewed them on both sides. And I get done interviewing four or five kids, five kids, and I walk out and say, you know, I'd have hired three of them right on the spot. That's compliment to you. So again, our challenge, cut costs, decrease taxes, at the same, and at the same time, don't lose the quality of the education. And remember one thing, good schools are made up of involved parents and worth a compliment then too, and involve them, because they push the kids. So, it's all together. And on behalf of our Faton family, God bless your families and Merry Christmas, and have a happy holiday.
Thanks. Happy holiday.
Anybody else? That's it. Okay. Um, let's see. Well, actually, let me, let me just correct one thing. Best I can tell, the contract that is included in the consent vote agenda, the requirements for that contract have been met. That's new information to me, so we have not had a chance to discuss that. But the requirement in the contract to give notice was fulfilled, okay? I'll specifically say really that the notice was due in February 1 in the fifth fiscal year prior to retirement, okay? And I have a letter here that actually complies with that requirement. If that was the requirement referred to, I don't see that that's missing. And again, that was new information to me tonight, so. Okay, so let's move ahead. The consent vote agenda is listed, it was either reviewed tonight or reviewed earlier, well, last month actually, in executive session. Can I ask for a motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Not roll call, please?
Arthur?
Aye.
Babson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Luth?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have board policies. There are six of them listed, the second reading and adoption. There have been no changes since the first reading, so we're looking for a motion to approve those board policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Babson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Luth?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have board policies. There are six of them listed, the second reading and adoption. There have been no changes since the first reading, so we're looking for a motion to approve those board policies as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Luth?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, and finally, we have four educational tour requests, so we're looking for a motion to approve those as listed.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Rudy?
Aye.
Lundsted?
Aye.
Luth?
Aye.
Mauer?
Aye.
Arthur?
Aye.
Babson?
Aye.
Delly Polly?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes.
Thank you very much. Facilities and finances, Chairman Babson.
Okay, there's a few items on here, nothing to vote on, but a few updates. Woodland Chase subdivision update.
Okay, Woodland Chase, again, as we've discussed several times, is a proposed subdivision up at the corner of Route 45 and Buffalo Grove Road. If you're on the other side of 45, it's Fairway. If you're on the Vernon Hills side of 45, as a board, and will recall, two-thirds of that's proposed subdivision is in the Stevenson High School and Lincolnshire Elementary District, one-third is in the Vernon Hills High School School District, and also Hawthorne District 73. I think from talking to our colleagues in the other school districts and our board, there's no desire on anybody's part to have that district split. So the conversation is, where are the kids going to go? The natural place to start is the majority of the kids would be in Stevenson and Lincolnshire. So we met with John Kalmar, the village administrator at Vernon Hills, and Joe Carey, who's the Director of Development and Assistant Village Administrator, last week regarding this. That would be, I'm sorry, Yasmin, myself, and then John was also along in the next issue that we'll discuss. And where we're at now is we're going to have some further conversation with the developer to see if there's some compensation for initial loss of the property value. As I said to the board earlier tonight, that will not be a boatload of money, because when we do impact fees, it's not a gigantic amount of money, but it would be some compensation for giving a small piece of potentially developed property up in that area. Jim, you want me to just continue because it's related in this study?
Sure, sure.
The next thing that we talked about in FNF tonight is there is a proposed behavioral, inpatient behavioral facility that has been proposed by a very reputable provider in the old CDW building, which is across from the gigantic CDW building. They're no longer in that. They've got a successful footprint in the Chicago area, including some facilities that have operated in pretty close proximity to some other schools, where the schools aren't even aware that they're there, as I think John's found out in some of his initial calling. But we have some other questions, and so the village is going to facilitate a meeting between John and some members of his team. John and I will talk after that meeting and give them an opportunity to come in and talk about what they're planning to do there, what, for example, security, they will have a place to make sure that it's a, you know, it's a safe environment for not only Vernon Hills High School and maybe CDW at Play, which is their daycare, other people that, you know, are in the area, for example. And I will leave this part of the conversation with this. We reaffirmed on behalf of the district, our, I think, which is our shared belief, it is very important for people to get behavioral and mental health treatment as they need it. And I think we all agree with that, and we've validated that, you know, position. So our position is not one to say, you know, heck no, nobody can ever come here, but we want to make sure that our questions are answered, that John's comfortable as principal of the building, I'm comfortable as a superintendent, and you can be comfortable as the board, that we have our questions answered and part of doing our research. So we just see this as a proactive meeting for everyone and an opportunity for us to have some more dialogue, okay? And the village is involved with us in this process, and we appreciate that. And so I guess I'm going to keep that. Brainer Memorial, we've talked about this, you know, every month, but we have scaled the project back a little bit. It's not as deep as it was, which will get us under the cost threshold that the board gave us. And we have to work our way through the process at the village on where it can be located and egress and all of those things. So it's in that process now, and we'll keep reporting out on it as we move forward, and I think it's going to be very exciting, you know, to get that up in a nice location on that triangle piece of property on Brainer, to recognize that using Brainer bricks and some of the original limestone decoration on the building. I think it'll be pretty neat, you know, when we get it up, be great addition to the facility, a nice remembrance for the community, so. Jim, that's it.
And just a quick thank you to Scott Lewis for covering for me tonight, chairing the committee meeting.
I had huge shoes to fill.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I couldn't live up to the standard, but I got you.
Thank you for the last moment.
You'll be late next time. You'll be late again.
That's all for the Facilities and Finance Committee.
Okay, let's see, what do we got here? Property, nothing, and seed all?
We had our quarterly meeting this week, had some great presentations about the principals of the different facilities, as well as those who run the sector programs that take place within our tiny schools. Unfortunately, there wasn't a forum again for the second time in a row, so we weren't able to do any business, so we're working on hopefully to get people to actually come so we can present more. But it was great, and they said they would be more than happy, of course, to come and do that presentation for us at some time. We're looking for a presentation, which I know we've had Seedall come before, but that's just something I always keep in mind.
That's great.
Okay, that's it.
Okay, anyone else? Right in the seat? Okay. Motion carries. So moved. Second? Okay. Paul and David?
Hi, thanks very much. Good night, everybody.
Good seeing all of you.